Welcome, it's 6:00 PM on Wednesday, June 4th, 2025. The Tuilla City Council and Redevelopment Agency of Tuilla City are meeting in a work meeting. This meeting is being held in the Tuilla City Hall Council Chambers located at 90 North Main Street in Tuilla, Utah. We are also streaming this electronically on the Tuilla City YouTube channel. We'll start with a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
President.
Councilwoman Goaches.
President.
Councilman Hanson.
President.
Councilman McCall.
President.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I'm present. Item three is the mayor's report.
Thank you, Chairman and Council. I just have one item that I'd like to report on tonight. Last evening, down at Fire Station Number Three, Tuilla City Fire Department hosted the Recruitment Academy Graduation for Fire School. There were 23 graduates. I mean, that's a big class. So, as you can see there, seven of those that are kind of in the blue color there, those are our graduates from the Tuilla City Fire Department. We had Austin Fuel, Macy Hogan, Aubrey Kimber, Mike Madrid, Bailey Sharman, Archer Wagner, and Eric Correll. And I'll tell you, they are dedicated members of the Fire Department. We're very grateful for the many months they spent training and graduating. And they took this quick picture after of some of the Fire Department Administration staff and that would command staff that was there. And I just wanted to give a huge recognition and thank you to Fire Chief, Assistant Fire Chief Nate Remington. He was the lead instructor. And he, again, spent many, many hours. And we just remind people, that's volunteer. All of these are volunteer hours, no paid time for doing what they did. And Nate did an excellent job of being the lead instructor this year. There were graduates from the Grantsville Fire Department, North Tuilla, Stockton, Tuilla County, and Vernon Fire Department. So, it's a great event, and we just honor and recognize them for their service. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item four, the council members' report. We'll start with Councilman McCall.
I attended the high school open house, the high school open house, and also the firefighters' one and two graduation. And I know I did so much, but I can't remember. But, oh, yeah, I attended the Memorial Day. And thanks, Justin, thanks, Marissa, for being there. And you, sorry. But I did want to say that that school is beautiful. It is, it is, it's nice. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Hanson.
Well, I was all over the state the last couple of days with my work, and so I didn't get to go to the school deal, but I went over today because I got a special invite to come over. And I went to run for a while. I mean, that's a big old school. But I gotta say, it's way cool. It's got lots of fancy stuff. And I thought it was good. And I put in my two cents that they ought to be able to, someone pull out of that parking or that extra field that's out there. Anyway, but yeah, it's gonna be amazing for them students to get to go there. So, that's way cool. And then, the cemetery was awesome, as usual, but we went and spent a lot of time up at the cemetery this last weekend, and it was beautiful up there. So, good job, Darwin and crew, and we appreciate that. And that's what I got.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goaches.
Thank you. I apologize, I wasn't able to attend the fire station graduation last night. I had a dance program for one of my family members, so I'm sure it was a nice event. On the 26th, I attended the Memorial Day Ceremony at the Veterans Park. And Dave does a really great job leading that effort with the Elks Lodge, and also visited the Tuilla City Cemetery and appreciate the hard work and staff of the Parks Department. On the 27th, I attended a meeting with Congressman John Curtis at the Tuilla County Chamber, had a chance to visit with him and express some of our desires and needs that we have in the county. On the 3rd of June, I attended a tour and ribbon cutting of the Desert Peak High School. So, thanks to the school board and the participation of the city for the involvement with the road to make that school accessible and other, you know, uses. That'll be very beneficial to our residents. I did complete training with the library, and that training was with Utah State Library. So, thank you. Board members must complete the training in order to qualify for an $8,000 grant. And one of my first high school jobs was at the Utah State Libraries, and I worked for the Division of the Blind. So, my mother was a librarian for over 40 years. My heart's in library and supporting this community. So, thanks to Chase Randall for all of his efforts and hard work. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Manzio.
Yeah, a lot of the same things. I would also like to congratulate the school district on their new high school. It was an awesome tour to see the fruits of their labor finally finished. So, it's great. It'll be a great addition to our community. And I also attended the fire school graduation, and I was just gonna echo what everybody else said, that we, our volunteer firefighters are great, and it was, it was a nice program. And welcome those firefighters. We've had a couple of predevelopments, so just, that just lets us know that people are still wanting to come to Tuilla and build here, and that's good for economic development. And then, I was able to attend an event with John Curtis also at Fluence Energy. I represented the mayor who couldn't go. He was here to talk about clean energy. I think it's one of his passions. So, we have some of that happening right here in our county. Of course, it's not in Tuilla City, but it is in our county, and it benefits a lot of our residents. And then, I attended a meeting with the governor about housing and his goal to get 35,000 starter homes built in the next five years. And as the mayor and I talked about that, I think we're doing our part in the building and approving, you know, the townhomes and things that hopefully that, I'm not sure they're still affordable, but at least we're helping hopefully with the problem. So, that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you. I think I attended all the events that most of you spoke about. So, the John Curtis, that county, and then Memorial Day event, that was a great day. Thanks for putting that on. The Desert Peak High School Open House was great. We were able to see that two or three months ago during construction, so it was great to see it completed. And I know a lot of kids are excited to go there. And then, the fire school graduation last night was great. I haven't been able to go to that in the past, so I was really glad that I was able to swing by and appreciate the Fire Department that we have. That concludes my report, so we'll move on to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is a discussion on proposed amendments to Tuilla City Code 7-1-5, Definitions and Tables 1, 2, and 3 of Tuilla City Code 7-14, Residential Zoning Districts Regarding Duplexes, Townhomes, Condominiums, and Associated Lot Sizes and Zero Lot Line Development, presented by Andrew Agard, the Community Development Director.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate your time tonight and taking this opportunity to present this proposed zone, or proposed ordinance amendments to you. Just to start off, this ordinance amendment doesn't propose any new land uses or anything of that nature. It is just to, trying to correct some problems that I've seen with how our ordinance is currently structured in regards to what people are asking to do. And it involves twin homes. And the ordinances that I'm proposing amendments to are Tuilla City Code 7-1-5 Definitions and Tuilla City Code 7-14 Tables 1, 2, and 3, in order to better facilitate the development of twin homes. And if you don't mind, I'll just jump right into where I'm going and why I'm going that way. And if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me. The current standards for twin homes in Tuilla City are relatively vague. The ordinance permits two-family dwellings or duplexes, and it permits them to occur in the MR-16, MR-12, MR-8, R-17, and R-18 residential zoning districts. Currently, to construct a duplex, all you have to do is have double the lot size. So, if you have a property in the R-17 zone, all you need is 14,000 square feet, and you can construct a duplex. But it doesn't necessarily address how we deal with twin homes. So, first of all, what is a duplex? A duplex is a two-family home. And in a duplex, there are two dwelling units with two sets of tenants. A duplex has one owner that is responsible for renting out and maintaining the entire property. So, essentially, you have one structure, one property. A duplex can look like a twin home. This is basically a duplex. There could be a property line bisecting the center of that building. Then again, there may not. With a duplex, you don't have to have that. A duplex can also be front and back. You can have a unit in front, you can have a unit in back. In some cases, you wouldn't even know there's a duplex there. The house could have two units, and you wouldn't even know it. A duplex can also be upstairs and downstairs. You can have a unit on the upper floor and a unit on the lower floor. You can do this because with a duplex, you're not dealing with a property line. Okay? It's a rental unit, so it's just one unit on a property. There's no property lines to deal with. A twin home is a little different. A twin home has two units. However, twin homes are technically classified as single-family homes because the twin homeowner owns and maintains their half of the property. So, you have one structure, but two different properties. And this is where we get into a little bit of confusion with the ordinance. With a twin home, twin homes always occur side by side because the property loan, property line extends down the center of the structure. And so, you won't have a twin home with a front or back unit. You probably won't have a twin home with an upstairs or a downstairs unit. Usually, they're divided right down the center. This would be a typical configuration for a lot. When you do a twin home, the lot would be divided down the center, and then each lot would maintain 7,000 square feet. This would be an example for an R-17 residential zone. The dilemma comes when considering a twin home. Tuilla City Codes easily permit a duplex. You have double the lot size, you can do a duplex. There are no property lines involved and no building setback issues at the center of the building. Pretty simple stuff to consider. Tuilla City Codes however do not address twin homes or the construction of a building over the property line. And what about the lot sizes for each side of the unit? The code also does not address that. So, currently, by ordinance, there is technically only one method to construct a two-family dwelling in Tuilla City, and that would be the duplex. And we want to have three methods. And I'll dive into those methods really quickly here for you. The proposal is to enable the construction of twin homes and condominiums for two-family dwellings and continue with rental duplexes as we do now. And this will enable the city to have more residential development tools in its tool belt. So, I've downloaded a few examples of current development within the city, and I'd like to explain some of the differences for you. This is Gossamer Place subdivision. Gossamer Place was subdivided to be a rental duplex. So, their plat, you'll see the lots are 14,000 square feet minimum. They're in an R-17 zone, and so they need to have double the lot size. So, to do a duplex, that's all you need to do. You need to have double the lot size in your plat, and you can put a duplex on there. This is the Porter's Place condominium project out on Coleman Street. It's a little unique. Porter's Place was approved with a condo plat. Now, the difference between this and, say, a standard twin home development is you'll note that the property lines do not go through the center of the units. Each twin home sits on its own lot. They did a condominium plat which basically privatizes the condo space, or the dwelling space for the owner, and then creates the common and limited areas, limited common areas around the structure. The problem we encountered with this is after we recorded the condo plat, it was discovered in Tuilla City Code 7-14 Table 1 that condos were actually prohibited in the R-17 and R-18 zoning districts. And so, that's one of the fixes that I wanted to propose to you tonight. But that's how Porter's Place was done. It was done through a condo plat. You may be familiar with Shetland Meadows. There are twin homes there. The subdivision plat, the area shaded in blue indicates some of the lots that were, that have twin homes on them. Those lots are as small as 4,000 square feet. Now, how did they do this one? This subdivision was approved at a time when the city didn't have MR zones. They had the HDR and the MDR zone. And I believe these were constructed during a time when these properties were owned MDR. And so, they were able to do the smaller lots and so forth. And as you can see, they are constructed on the property line. So, the property line goes right through the center of the unit. And let's see. Last one is Par Four Estates Twin Homes. These are recently constructed up by the golf course. These twin homes also are constructed over the property line, and they have lot sizes of 5,000. So, how did they do that? They did a PUD, which enabled the smaller lots and some unique development criteria. However, not all lots qualify for PUDs. And so, we would like to make a few changes to the codes that were mentioned to enable more easy construction of twin homes and condominiums, but also to facilitate staff's review. Now, these proposed amendments may not reflect Roger's comments. I sent it to Roger, but I didn't have a chance to reflect those. But before it comes back to you, I'll make sure we put those comments in there. But I'm proposing to amend the definitions section to include a twin home as a two-family dwelling, and also to add two definitions for a duplex and a twin home, just to have those in our definitions section. And then, Tuilla City Code Title VII, Chapter 14, Residential Zoning Districts, down where it's highlighted in blue, dwelling condominiums, adding conditional for the R-17 and R-18 zone. So, if somebody wants to build a twin home and use a condo plat, they have that tool And then, Tuilla City Code 7-14 Table 2, Table of Allowed Density, on the two-family row, just adding twin home and then specifying the lot size, which is basically the minimum lot size as required by the zone. And then, eliminating zones being replaced by exclusion or inclusion. That dates back to when we actually changed from the MDR, HDR to the MR zones. Doesn't really need to be in there anymore. And then, on this table, the areas highlighted, one of them is minimum lot width. Those lot widths come back to, go back to a time when we allowed single-family dwellings in the MR zones. We don't allow single-family dwellings in MR zones anymore, so we don't need to have that in there. And then, also, the other section, Minimum Sideyard Setback, proposing the addition of two footnotes, which will then take you down to the notes section, which says, "Twin Homes May Be Permitted a Zero Lot Line for Internal Setbacks." The problem we have is right now, people come in, they want to build a twin home, and then we look through the code, and there's nothing that addresses the zero lot line. And so, to be square with the code, we wanted to add that so that if people want to develop a twin home, they can do it without having to violate side yard setbacks. So, that's the proposals for twin homes. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you and hopefully get your blessing to move this forward through a process.
Are there any questions or comments?
Well, I appreciate the explanation. I think the definitions helped me to understand the differences and that this will really help in clarification. And especially in my mind, you guys are the experts, but thank you for that.
You're welcome.
When I was reading about it, I was just thinking about the other kind of homes, what it's, I think they're called townhomes, where they, but them are just in the MR areas, right? The townhomes? So, that's the difference?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. This explanation, straighten that out for me, because I wasn't sure how that works. All right?
Okay, thanks, Andrea. We can move that forward.
Okay, I'll get it moving through the process. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Our next discussion item is a discussion on animal licenses, presented by Adrian Day, the police chief.
Thank you, Council. Exciting subject of animal licensing tonight. I appreciate it. Animal licensing does help us a little bit by identifying owners, obviously, but it does help with responsible pet ownership, too, keeping track of vaccinations and such. This code, a little background, requires dogs and cats to be licensed each year. This license expires after the December 31st, no matter when you purchase it. So, if you purchase it in July, you only have it good for six months. If you purchase a license after February 28th, the code also says you get a late fee, which doubles the price on you if it's after that timeframe. Sterilized dog is $10. Sterilized cat is $5. Unsterilized either one is $35. And I'm, for a note in the code, four months is when you can, when you're supposed to license an animal when it's four months old. Vet, I'm hearing, doesn't recommend sterilizing a cat or dog until six months. So, people hold off or, and not do it for that, that two-month timeframe. Halfway through 2025, we have 104 cat licenses and 1,015 dog licenses. I don't think we're near 20%. Probably not even near 10%, but I think a big difference between the numbers is enforcement. We've had 595 calls on animals, and it's mostly dogs. We have taken enforcement action on 195 of these calls. It's all dogs. And when we get a stray dog and an owner reclaims or it bites somebody, we get the license, and that's why we have more licensed dogs. Several citizens have complained about this, about going in every year, redoing it, and one of them suggested if they come in and get chipped, it's a $25 fee to get chipped, if we would not require a license. I thought it was a good suggestion. We would require the owner to come in every year to verify the owner, that they've registered the chip and have everything up to date, like their phone and everything, if the animal's found. And they'd get a license just for having a chip in the dog that's current. And they come in every year verifying ownership, verifying they're up on their vaccines, and verifying the chip comes back to them. I don't know if you'd be in support of this. We'd, I'd get with Roger, and we'd word this correctly and bring it in a future business meeting.
Seems logical, yes.
I don't know your feeling on cats. 100 cats.
We have more than 104 cats in the city.
We do, in the Utah code on the cats that can be community cats out and about, and they don't need to be licensed as, that causes a problem. It's hard to enforce any owner. You don't know if it's community cat or not, most of the time.
Lots of cats around.
Mr. Chair, I have a just comment. I just have a comment. It's like, how do we share this information with the public? You know, can we, like, maybe have an outreach program that we can reach out to pet groomers and the veterinarians to let them know that, you know, we're requiring them to be licensed? Of course, you know, they're the people that work with these animals the most, and that maybe they could share this information about licensing, about being chipped, and the benefits to that.
I think them that are the ones that are licensed, though, the ones that go to the groomers and stuff, them are the people that do do that part of it.
Yeah, me too.
The other ones that...
The ones who care about their pets and finding them do chip them most of the time.
Uh-huh.
And they're there, but a lot of them, we require to chip them. They never register them, and it comes back to the manufacturing company, and they're not registering. So, we could word that in code that they must do that also.
And maybe advertise in 90 North Main, that that would be a good way to get that, get the word out. I'm just thinking, more communication.
We can, and we push it, and I'm guessing previous years have been higher, but you license it, and next year go, well, I'm not gonna do it this year. Is it the simple fee? Or is it the time? I don't know if this will help or not, if it's chipped.
Can they license them just online and do it, or do they have to come in? Do you know?
It has to go through finance, I believe. I don't think there's any online...
We've always came in, but I was just curious if that was a way to make it easier.
But you get an actual license, and that has to, I guess we could end up mailing it, but that'd be more cost.
I know. I'm trying to think about...
Okay, we're already doing that.
I didn't hear what she said.
She says we are accepting them online and mailing them already.
I wonder if the public knows that.
If they have rabies vaccination.
And how do you prove rabies?
So, we put the date in there, so like, if the rabies is up to date, then you will allow it to reach online. They're doing it for two or three years, whatever it is.
Because of the shelter, they come in, we see, we usually have to contact the vet because no one has a copy of the licensing, so we usually have to track that down with them.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. Are you suggesting that you don't want to require licensure of cats?
There could be times when it's, when it's effective, but we just don't take many calls. We do get a few cat bites every now and then. I think we average less than one a year. I'm sure there's more bites than that, but they don't get reported.
So, we want to do more enforcement for licensing, or no? That, I don't know even, who would even do that? You're not gonna do something?
Menaway City was in the, was in the paper for doing that. They went out in full, full force, and I don't know. Maybe read up on that and see if that was positive or not.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it would be very time-consuming to go door-to-door every license.
Well, we, we have to have some way to try and, in fort, well, make it so people want to do rabies vaccinations for them dogs. I don't know about the licenses, that's a big deal, but it's important we have rabies vaccinations to our animals, so.
Correct.
I don't know how that works if you did away with a license, which you could, but that's the only way we get them to go do a rabies, for sure.
Yeah, and licensing is the best way to keep track of that, because people don't keep their, their copy. They have no idea when they expire, and if they put it with us in the chip, we can keep track of that for them.
Yeah.
And if it's a one-time cost, maybe that will entice them. I think it's the coming in every year, doing it over and over.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Good with it.
I like the suggestion, yeah. I think we can bring it back to a business meeting. Is everyone okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks, Chief. Our last discussion item is a budget discussion, presented by Shannon Wimmer, the Finance Director.
Good evening, Council. The only thing I really have for discussion tonight is just to update you on the minimal changes that we have made to the budget since we met on May 7th. So, I did leave you a copy of that. I'll just go over each one briefly, and then I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the budget. The first item is just a minor adjustment within the library line items. They have increased their cleaning from four to six days a week, and he covered that by another line item, so we just transferred 4,750 between those two line items. The next item is restroom. The mayor might have to remind me which restroom this is that we're building, oh, Veterans Park, excuse me. We had originally budgeted part of that in the par tax, and we are just moving the entire cost for that Veterans Park restroom into the Park Impact Fee Fund. So, we brought on that additional 150,000. And then, we also talked about adding a restroom over at the Glen Eagles Park, and so that has also been put into that Park Impact Fee Fund. We had a minimal $3,000 increase for wireless services for the parks, and that's just because they have brought a few more parks online with having the wireless or the internet. We've had some updates on our homeless mitigation funds, so we don't believe we will be receiving that 40,000 in mitigation funds next year. So, we removed $40,000 out of our revenue. And then, as we talked about the sidewalk program last time, we had carried over the 50-50 program, and this is just showing to carry over an additional 70,000 in just the sidewalk replacement program. They're kind of two separate things, so this is just bringing that carryover now. We think most of the expenses out of that have been paid. And then, we just had some minor changes in payroll that you have that sheet attached. I'm really not gonna go over them because they're mostly just insurance. We had our open enrollment since our last meeting, and this is just people updating their insurance for the most part. As I look through, as I look through it, I didn't see any, it's not really pay changes. There's a small ladder. Someone, you know, has, has met the qualifications to go to the next step in their position, and then just changes from family to insurances to single, things like that, through open enrollment. Kami just is very particular and very to the numbers on her payroll budget, so we have those all in there. But I'm happy to answer questions about them, and of course, Kami's here. She can answer questions as well.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I have a question and a comment, just, you know, the...
I have a question and a comment. Just, you know, the, the $40,000 that was removed from homeless mitigation funds, how can we continue to request that funding from the state? That, that's a significant amount of money.
I think they're working through that. I'll let the mayor answer that, but...
Forty, $40,000 for what the, the state wants us to do with the homeless issue. $40,000 does not, it's not a drop in the bucket. It is just not. It costs us as much as $40,000 to administer the program and request the grant money, and to provide the services that we're, we are already providing. So it, they've, they've grouped cities into tier levels. We're in level two, which only gets 2.5 percent of those homeless funds. If we were in tier one, we would get 80, 80-something percent of those funds, which puts us up into an area where we would want to be. So I am working with our representative from the Utah League of Cities and Towns to see if we can get us up into tier one. That takes legislation to do that. But I, I still believe that the homeless committee is working through the process of how to make this happen. Our challenge is that this year, we used it for part of a police officer's pay. And they accepted that at the beginning, but then as we reported it, they said, we, we want a full-time officer within one mile of the shelter, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That's three officers. We, that's over $300,000, and we get 40. It is, it just really isn't worth it. So as I asked if we would be considered less if we did not apply this year, because that's all we can apply for, and they said, no, we think you should be in tier one. The other challenge we have in reporting for homeless is the state wants to see that this money has reduced the homeless population and the homeless problems. That is not true for Tuila City. We continue to have additional homeless people come here. Many do commit crimes. They are called on for trespassing, among many other things. And the homeless shelter that we have cannot accommodate all of them. We believe when it was built, it was for our homeless here. That is just not the case. They are still coming from outside of our county, and it is, it is a big challenge for us. So the requirements don't work. We, we are not seeing a decrease. So again, it's difficult. So we have had many discussions and decided that this year, we would not apply for the 40,000.
We're finding, from my sergeant, who's there at the switch point, we're finding that our homeless are the ones being kicked out. They're the ones being kicked out for either violence, drugs, or whatever they're naming it for. We're, we're housing out of town, or so. Their requirement within the mile, they want a, a single officer to sign a, a form, their policy on, on how they'll treat the homeless. And I'm, I'm, who do I have sign this? The, the sergeant who goes and meets, or the, an officer on the road who's, who's going to be called out in the middle of the night? I'm, I'm confused on who to send. And they want us to have a meeting with, collaborate with everybody with the homeless. We have to, we have to sponsor this meeting twice a year, and they're giving us certain criteria to debate and talk about and fix. It, it's hard. It's hard. I need a full-time, at least a full-time pay to do this. I think they should give us at least a full-time pay, or somebody's dedicated to this, for sure.
So simply put, we would be spending more money or time to get the 40,000.
Yeah.
More taxpayer dollars on a local level that is taken care of. First of all, we are the only shelter in the county. So that burden of the taxes is only placed upon our residents, not the entire county. The state is also collecting homeless mitigation money through sales tax of cities that are not hosting a shelter. And the majority of those monies are going towards where the population is. I get that. I totally get it. But it has impacted us on a very negative basis. They've got to find a better way to get us funding, to help us with the problem, and to help us not put that burden on our taxpayers.
Okay. Any other budget questions for Shannon?
Not since last meeting.
I, I just had a comment, and I just wanted to thank the mayor and Shannon and Kami for presenting a balanced budget. You know, it's a very difficult thing, and you work with staff, and we really appreciate that. And as a council, at least I feel that almost every dollar that the city uses or spends in our budget comes from our residents. I know there are grants, there are revenues. But as a citizen and, and a council, I think it's our moral duty to see that we justify spending our tax dollars wisely and carefully, and important to do that fairly. And I see that in this budget, that every department is getting a fair portion. Not everybody gets everything on their wish list, but I just think an extraordinary effort has gone into this budget very thoughtfully, and that we're not requiring citizens to bear an additional tax increase. And so I just want to commend you and thank the staff for their efforts, because, and, and also for our budget book. Shannon, help me again with our budget book. It's very clear and easy to understand. Would be easy for residents to understand. So it's a very good tool for, for us as council members. So I just wanted to commend you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give that credit to the budget officer, that's the mayor, but thank you very much.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, we'll move on to a closed meeting. We do have a closed meeting tonight to discuss personnel. I'll entertain a mission, a motion, sorry, to move to a closed meeting.
So moved.
Now, second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio, and a second from Councilwoman Goachis. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall. Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. Okay, well, it's 6:36, and we'll reconvene upstairs in the conference room.